Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll call this meeting to order, and if you all could please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Lord, we thank you so much for bringing us here today, this group of people who you've chosen to lead St. Petersburg College, to lead these students, and to help this community become better, become better for the students, become better for those who live here. We are all here for one mission, and that's to improve the lives of those who come within the four walls of these campuses and take our classes online. We thank you for the guidance that you give us. We ask for wisdoms and decisions that are made that affect so many lives. And most of all, we thank you for this community that we live in. It's full of people who want to partner, who want to support us, and who want to help with our mission. It's in your wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, religious heavens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to welcome you all today, and we have a few retirement resolutions. However, no one is in attendance today, so we will move past that and go directly to our comments.
Announcements.
Announcements? Do we have any announcements?
Yes, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the old agenda. I have two in front of me. Anne, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams, good morning. It is my pleasure to introduce our acting dean for the College of Computer and Information Technology, excuse me, John Long. He has a master's in business administration with a specialization in information systems and management. Before coming to us, he spent nine years with Pinellas County Schools as a developer and industry certification exam coordinator in their career technical and adult education department. He became an adjunct for the College of Computer and Information Technology back in 1999. Four years ago, he came on board full-time with us as the academic chair for the College of Computer and Information Technology. He also has 19 years of industry experience as an auditing manager and software trainer. So it is our pleasure to welcome him in this acting position.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to comments, and I will start. It's been a fun month and an interesting month for me since our last meeting. First and foremost, we got a chance to tour. Ms. Cole was with me for that, to tour some of our assets as a college that we have at our many different locations throughout Pinellas County. This was a great chance for us to get an idea of the type of buildings, facilities, infrastructure, and real estate that we have, and it's kind of a brainstorming trip to see how we could maybe use these things in the future, what makes the most sense for the college overall, how can we maximize what we already have put together here in Pinellas County. And it really started some great conversations that I'm sure we will continue for many months to come as to what that looks like long-term for St. Petersburg College. So a big thank you to the group that put that together, and for our excellent bus driver who drove us around all morning and kept us out of trouble, which was nice. But it was important for us to get a chance to see with our own eyes, all at the same time, exactly what we have out there. Sometimes just talking about it and reading about things on paper isn't quite as effective as being there and walking the halls ourselves. So thank you to the group that put that together, and more info to come on that, I'm sure. In addition, I just want to thank our president, Dr. Williams, for her work in Tallahassee for this session. Session is over, thank goodness.
Yes.
Some damage was done, but we also made some great progress there, and I want to thank you for your leadership on that and for the time spent. And I know from the text messages and conversations that even during spring break, there was a lot going on.
Yes.
But we did get some of the key and important items that were on our list of priorities taken care of, including the $3.5 million to finish our Gibbs construction project at the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus. And so we're thankful for that, and it looks like a little more funding for the operating budget as well. It's not easy in year one to have to tackle that much, but we're very thankful for where we got and for the leadership you showed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, you know, in addition, I just wanted to mention, as Dr. Williams was also running around in Tallahassee, I've been in meetings and seen her throughout the community more and more. I was at a downtown partnership luncheon this past month where she was the speaker. I've already had multiple phone calls and conversations with leaders in our community asking, how can we get involved? How can we partner with the college? What can we do to help? I know of many other meetings and lunches and groups of people you've met with. This is important. This is a big step that we laid out over a year ago to get more involved with the community and really become the main resource for what businesses are looking for, for what the people who live in Pinellas County are looking for as far as economic mobility for students of any age, but also educating our workforce. And I appreciate the steps that have been taken so far to start those conversations. I'm excited to see where they go, and this is just the beginning. I think there's a lot of great things to come from this. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Those are all the comments I have today. Anything from the board members?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. This week is the St. Petersburg College Foundation's Scholarship Luncheon tomorrow, so I don't know how many of us will be attending, but I'll be there. I think you'll be there as well. So thank you to the foundation for all of its great work, and all of the supporters and businesses and individuals who fund those scholarships. And if you haven't attended, it's a wonderful luncheon. It was my first event or opportunity to, last year after the governor appointed me to this board, I think two days later, I attended the scholarship luncheon, and it was really a great way to be indoctrinated into St. Petersburg College and the support that it shows the community as a whole and what our students really expect from the college, so.
Absolutely. Okay. And our president.
It has definitely been an exciting month. I want to thank the board as well for visiting Tallahassee with me, making the phone calls to the different legislators, keeping SPC's name at the forefront. Had it not been for the work of all of you and what you have done, we would not be where we are. So thank you for being active participants. It's important to the college and the faculty and staff to know we have a strong board that's willing to stand in the gap with the president to do these things. And last week, well, during spring break, I called, I asked you guys, make the phone calls, I emailed, I texted, and you came through, and I want to thank you for that. So much has gone on that's been great. Five, actually, six of our students have been named to the All Florida Academic Team, and this is based on academic leadership, achievement, and service to their communities. Their names are Alexandria Bryant, Don Lewis, Max Matthew, Michaela Stystrad, William White, and Grace Zanny. And so I'm real proud of our students who have been named to the All Academic Team. Twelve of our students from the College of Education have been granted scholarships for Hispanic and minority students. This is the largest number that we've received from the state, and we're very proud of that. Their names are Michelle Fio, Tila Han, LaShaquanda Longstreet, Tabitha McGann, Varanese Metz, Gabriela Perez, Nicole Schrader, Vance Sinclair, William White, Michelle Remy, Kenon Gilson, and Brandon Karasik. I think that's extremely important. We had a great partnership meeting with Pinellas County Schools. You'll see that document in front of you on the work that we have done. Dr. Grego and I are very pleased at the strengthening of our partnership as we go forward with articulations and making sure that we provide an academic pathway for our students in this county. Also, Governor Scott announced a $22 million investment for Florida job growth. St. Petersburg College was one of the 11 groups who received funding. We received $1.5 million for us to create a mechatronics and electromechanical technician training program. So there were several applications. 11 were chosen. SPC is proud to be one of them. And that is all that I will share at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And public comments? I see none. I don't believe we have any today, so we will continue on with our review and approval of last month's minutes from our February 20th meeting. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I hear a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. That moves us to our monthly reports with our board attorney.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Good morning. I have no report this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Okay, and we have a presentation, student success and academic achievement, and I'll invite up Dr. Crawford and Ms. Timms.
Good morning, Dr. Williams, Chair Stonecifer, and members of the board. Sabrina Crawford, I'm the Executive Director of Institutional Research and Effectiveness. I'm here today with Maggie Timms, and I'm very thankful not to be talking about accreditation, but instead talking about the Student Survey of Instruction. Just to kind of give you an overview of all of the different ways that we actually survey our students, SPC does several surveys. It starts off with an entering student survey. We continue on with those students as they're enrolled with an enrolled student survey, and culminating in a graduating student survey over the course of their tenure here at the college. We also do a recent alumni survey to see how they're faring out in the work world or into their next adventure, and we also do employer surveys for those employers that we know that have hired our graduates to see whether or not the skills that they have are the correct skills that we're teaching them. We also have two national surveys that we do on a cycle of three years. One is the CSE and one is the SENS, and that gets overall perceptions, and then those are quantified and compared against the national norms. And finally, we have the Student Survey of Instruction, which is the one that we're going to be talking about today. So the Student Survey of Instruction went through a revamp in 2009, and Provost Oliver at the time got together a bunch of faculty members and administrators and kind of pulled together all of the then-paper surveys into one modality-neutral online survey that's based upon 18 Likert-scaled questions on a scale of 1 to 7, 7 being the best, and two open-ended questions. Since that time, every semester, we have an SSI committee that reviews the results and talks about ways that we can increase the response rate, and that committee is comprised of faculty members, FGO president, administrators, and we have reviewed and reviewed and reviewed. We've increased our response rate somewhat, but there's only been two major changes. One was when we changed the questions from the instructor to the faculty, big change, and the other one was a method of allowing students to be aware of the survey, which Maggie's going to talk about in a minute. So these results are accessible by faculty. A week after grades close, they receive an email, and they're allowed to log into the system and see the results at that time. The way that we allow faculty to become aware of the survey, it starts off in the beginning of each semester, an email is sent out to the faculty, allowing them to access to this website, which provides them the details on the administrative dates, tutorials for new faculty members to understand best practices to engage students in using the SSI. The SSI is actually launched during the last 25% of each course, so for an eight-week course, that's the last two weeks; 16-week, that's the last four weeks. And emails, faculty get emails five days before it opens, again, 50% into the time that it's going on, and then again in 75% of that time, to remind students to participate in the survey.
Good morning. I'm Maggie Timms, Director of Institutional Effectiveness. The enhancements that were made in 2015 allowed for automatic insertion of the SSI link into each course at the same location for consistency across the college. The box that you see at the top of the page here is a notice that students get one week prior to the SSI opening, so that they are aware that it is coming. That notice changes into a new message that allows students to begin the survey. This table shows the response rates for the past six semesters, and what you see here is a response rate between 54 and 60%. By comparison, the standard online course evaluation response rate runs about 20% to This graphic is a visual representation of the SSI for the past seven years, so you can see the response rates continue to improve slightly across time for those years. But in 2015, there's a spike, and that was when those enhancements were made, where we increased the response rates by 20%. The final table shows the course scores for each of the three categories, which are faculty, engagement, course instruction, and preparation. And what you see here is the scores range between 6.4 and 6.7 on a seven-point scale. And this has been consistently, these have been consistently high for the entire time. Heather Roberson, one of our faculty members, shared with us a view of her SSI scores, and this is what each faculty sees when they log in one week after grades have been posted. Basically, they have scores for each of the 18 questions for the section they taught. Comparison data are also presented for the course itself, the overall course, the department. In this case, the course was online, so online comparative data are presented, as well as SPC's overall scores. The composite scores below for those three categories that we spoke of are also presented, and those are the same categories and scores that are transferred over to Faculty 180. Dr. Cooper will share with you how these scores are then...
I'll be talking about the faculty evaluation process, but if you look at the lower chart, you'll see that the majority are of a faculty fall within the 6 to 7 range. So if we saw someone with scores coming in at a 5 or a 4, that's a red flag for us. So we would definitely address that with the faculty member. We would look at things like, is this their first semester, and help them in gaining ideas about how to adjust that. And then if we didn't see a change, there have been times where we have, not just based on this data alone, but based on an overall perspective, we may do a delay in a contract decision, or we may not renew a contract. So I just wanted to interject that. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have questions.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good job. Two things. I noticed that, number one, that this was done in 2009, right? If I read this stuff...
The start.
The start. We did this over in 2009, and Provost Oliver led it. Were their students a part of the process in terms of the questioning? The questions just seem so vanilla in terms of whether the faculty came prepared more than anything else, not whether the student felt like they learned anything. I saw one question, I think, in the packet that I received, where it talked, one question that maybe dealt with, did you change my opinion of the course or something like that? But it was like, these were questions, of course, I would fall into a 6.4 range, because all of them, if a faculty person's going to stand in front of a group of people, they're not going to stand there and not have the materials. They probably taught it 10,000 times. So they would know the material, and the questions just seem so vanilla in terms of whether the faculty was prepared or not. Not whether I was engaged. It has one question there about being engaged, but not whether the student, how much did I learn? Would you take this course again? Would you take this faculty member again? That's not in there. So I want to make sure that if we go through this process again, that students have the opportunity to put their own questions in this, because I don't feel like this is real data that we're getting back. This is just whether the faculty member's prepared and ready to teach the class and graded it properly, graded your stuff properly. And so while it's our process, I think it still has some flaws as it relates to whether the student has real, you get real feedback from the students. These are just questions, general questions about faculty members.
I think that those are excellent points. My understanding of how the survey was put together, it was really a compilation of what was then about five different paper surveys, and the faculty members at the time simply wanted to get something that was instruction-based, that could be the same across all modalities and all courses. So back in 2009, great, it was a good first attempt, and maybe it is time to do something now.
Yeah, I think it was a great first attempt. I mean, it was good, but when you look at it, you know, there's, I mean, SGA should probably be involved, somebody from SGA, some other students should be involved. And from different areas of the college, students should be involved, because, you know, the young people or the persons that are in veterinary and health sciences are going to be looking for some, their questions may be very different. It may be a survey for each program or each dean's area, specialty, because students are looking for different things, and they rate things differently than we do. So I'm not sure, but I think there should be definitely some student involvement. I just don't think there's enough feedback from student, these are student questions. They don't sound like student questions. They sound like an administrator went in the room with other administrators and put these questions together.
I think it's a great idea to have students involved as far as taking some questions that they may come up with that we're not thinking of. I think we do need to caution, though, against including questions that may lead to biased answers in some way, shape, or form, because I learn differently than Bridgette does, and we just have to guard against questions that would allow for, I didn't like this teacher because they didn't teach the way I like.
I don't have any problem with that. I just think, but you do have to, if you want real, the end product, the end user is a student.
Right.
And there's nothing in here from the student.
Good. Can we go back to the first slide that shows the different surveys that we provide? What Trustee Gibbons is focusing on is not getting student engagement and how they were treated in the class. So the CSE survey, SUPER surveys, the faculty and the student engagement, and the SENS survey from semester one, there are questions on there I think you would feel may also be embedded in the Survey of Instruction, but we do capture that data. And those other two surveys, the SENS and the CSE, the Enrolled Student Survey and others, so that's why we do several to get...
So when does a student, when does a student get the enrolled student survey?
The enrolled student survey...
Go ahead.
Sorry. It is administered every fall, so throughout their tenure. One time a year throughout their tenure at SPC.
Every fall. But what I'm saying, Trustee Gibbons, is that we can certainly go back and include the student voice and get students to share with us. I also like what Chair Stonecifer stated, that we need to be able to ask questions that we'll be able to get a sense of what's going on as a college as well. So we can get questions like, you know, would you take this professor again, or something like that, but we don't want to get so granular that it is specific to what I personally would want or need. So we can go back and take a look at the survey and include the student voice and bring that back.
And I don't want to misrepresent those questions as being administrative written. The administrators have no voice in the questions whatsoever. It's 100% faculty-led. It was voted upon by FGO. It went through a long process to get to those 18 questions that everyone agreed upon.
But we didn't get the student voice.
So you just made my point. You made my point exactly.
Yes.
The faculty is evaluating the faculty.
I agree.
The student is not evaluating the faculty.
I agree.
The end user does not have a voice in this process.
Right, so we will bring that in.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Is there, I think the percentage of students that respond is quite impressive.
Yes.
I know how many responses I get to emails that I send out, and it's like 5%. So is there any sort of incentive, or is this all just based upon when you're sending the information out, how often you're sending it out, and it being in front of their face for that?
Absolutely. We do not use any incentives. What has been found to work best is when faculty members express to students that this is very important to them, because they will make changes to their course based on their responses, and they bring up some changes that have been made that way.
And I think the two open-ended questions also serve a lot of good for the faculty member to understand where those changes should be. I know that in the discussions that we've had, especially with the faculty evaluation, they actually requested to have those comments included in their faculty evaluation to be able to talk to those beyond just the numbers, so.
Good. Ms. Cole? I just had a question about national standards. Are there, I presume that all, most colleges would do some sort of student engagement survey along these lines. Do you all take any type of threshold question or standards, and then are there national benchmarks that we strive for? I mean, a 0 to 7 scale is, you know, are those like, is that because there are other schools that are using those types of things and these questions, so we can look at, we do so many surveys, the ability to take something and have the same questions that somebody else is using and say, our faculty are performing at this level versus somebody...
The questions are pretty similar to multiple other institutions. I don't know if it was designed that way back in 2009, but I think if you do the comparison right now, you'd probably see more than 50% of the questions are the same, if not worded slightly differently for our own constituents.
Is there any national compilation of the results, so that you could do a comparison of our results?
Not specifically of these questions, but the CSE and the SENS certainly have the benchmark information, and they are the same questions, of course, across.
Sure.
Yeah, the biggest benchmark that we work on, because we went online, there was a lot of fear factor of, now that this isn't a paper one, we can't pass it out to the students and then collect it. It's not mandatory. There was a large discussion about should it be mandatory, should not be mandatory, with the decision that, no, we don't want to make it mandatory. It's supposed to be optional for students. So just making the awareness campaign was what made the big difference for us to climb above that 20 to 30% national norm.
Mr. Chair, can we have the president and her staff look at AAC or AACT and see if anybody else has student, what kind of student involvement they've had in these types of questions and issues? When you asked that question, that sparked out in my mind that there, we do have national organizations that do this, and we may be trying to, it may be able, just worth asking the question...
Sure.
...to see if there is a guide, may not be what we utilize, but a guide...
Sure.
...to a starting point. This is why, when I talk about AACT and AAC to the board members, this is kind of our resource. And so, Madam President, if that's okay, can you look and see if that's already been done somewhere, maybe, maybe not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yay, may? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite up the Student Government Association, and we have with us Ms. Fumano, Ms. Zahara Puluh, and Mr. Rivera. And if I got those wrong, I apologize, but I tried my hardest.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm Faiza Zahara Puluh, I'm the Student Government Association President at the Gibbs Campus.
I'm Jerick Rivera, I'm the Student Government Association Secretary and Treasurer at the Seminole Campus.
And I'm Barbara Fumano, I'm the Student Life and Leadership Coordinator at the Tartan Springs Campus.
Great.
And today, we're here to talk to you a little bit about student life and leadership, Student Government Association, and the budgeting process that is used. As you can see here, the mission statement for student life and leadership, "We're here to provide transformative, out-of-class opportunities for students to further develop themselves as productive citizens within their community." As student life and leadership coordinators... citizens within their community." As student life and leadership coordinators, we are also the advisors for Student Government Association. And now, Folly is going to explain a little bit about the purpose for the Student Government Association.
So, the Student Government Association, we present the interests and concerns and needs of the student body as a whole. We're liaisons between the student body as well as the college administration and we're fiscally responsible for allocation of a portion of the student activities fees that is given to us throughout the year. So, our budget allocation process. So, our revenue for student, um, activities fees is $4.3 million. 25% of that is given to the student government, um, which is an allocation of about $1.07 million. It's proportionally distributed through, based on enrollment by each campus. Um, Campus SGA Executive Board presents a plan to Dr. Williams and Vice President and Student Services in the fall and spring. So, the fall, um, presentation is us explaining where our money is going to go, kind of how we proportion and funds, um, throughout, um, the portion of the budget that we control. And the spring is kind of given, coming back and saying what we've used the money on and, um, how we, how we spent it, how we've been fiscally responsible throughout the year and the certain allocation we do have left, where we plan, um, to go from there. So, our budget process, our SGA Executive Board meets over the summer first to determine the campus budget. So, with SGA, if you look through, um, our presentation at the Gibbs Campus, we got around roughly $200,000 in the beginning. So, you'll notice throughout the progression of where each allocation goes. One of the biggest, um, proportion budgets that goes through SGA as well as on-campus support, um, to support our students and faculty administration throughout the whole year. Um, we've incorporated the Student Life and Leadership pillars. These are our five pillars, diversity, leadership development, service, student success, and wellness. Um, these are better helping us gauge our students' needs and desires on a college campus. It made us be more, um, kind of optimize and organize with our budget presentations this year to see which, um, which fits where. Under the tab of Student Government, Gibbs Campus in the booklet you have in front of you, if you go to the Student Government allocation, you'll see that we have two pillars incorporated under that. We have leadership development as well as service. These are the two pillars that we focus on, on that portion, um, specifically in order when we plan events and talk to students to see kind of what kind of service activity can we do to help them or what leadership conference we can go to and engage our students that way. So, our budget process, our SGA meets at least twice a month in order to discuss official business, including budget proposals. We have a proposal link throughout each college campus and it's pretty basic to the fact that it states the, um, the purpose for the student body, the benefit to the student body as well as the college as a whole. Um, it has a, uh, budget breakdown. So, depending on the funds requested by a club, organization or advisor, um, they have, um, breakdown and we present an open, a general assembly meeting, um, free for all students to join and our senators vote on that. They're the voice and they present roughly 200 students per campus. So, we get a student body as a whole. And we follow Robert, certain Robert's rules of orders in order to conduct the meeting in a fair way. And it's voted then on and if it's approved, um, the, the money is then approved and emailed out to the advisors and whomever. And under our proposal tab as well, we've highlighted a few of the most important proposals that have been already approved this, um, semester, such as Student Veterans Conference that they went to in Texas, which was a great opportunity for them to enhance their skills and kind of come back and show us what they've, what they've used their money, that money for, as well as Phi Theta Kappa, which actually went to their, um, conference and won many awards for SPC. So, that's a huge benefit for our college as well as our students in general. Um, each club and organization on our campuses are granted seed money, which varies throughout, um, each campus, but it's basically money at the beginning of each year in order to help their club involvement and kind of spread their membership and engage our students together. Here you'll see an example of a budget breakdown. So, this is kind of how, what we use throughout all of our campuses to balance our budgets. On the left, we have a column of the events and the money that we've actually spent as well as the balance of remaining in that pot of money. We've also incorporated the pillars, the five pillars on the top right, which kind of shows, okay, so we have this event, it goes through diversity, there's this much spent and how much is left. And you'll also notice that we have a reserved pot under every budget, um, on our campus, which kind of gives us that we're fiscally responsible for all this money. And we keep, keep a certain amount of money on the side in general terms of any unforeseen circumstances that we might have, especially being with student leaders and dealing with money. Um, it's very important for us to set that money aside and kind of come back to it if there's anything that we do need to accomplish with that as well. Um, leadership development, this is one of the most important things that being a student lead and also being a student government has taught us is, um, kind of gain confidence in talking in front of people and presenting things like this. Um, we go to numerous amount of conferences throughout the, the year and we take a lot of our students with us as well as our senators in order to engage them in the processes as well. One of the most impactful trips that we took was the president's trip to Tallahassee where we learned about legislators. We talked, um, individually to our senators, which was an amazing experience. Um, the most important part, it, it showed us what civic engagement is. A lot of times we hear a lot about it. We hear, um, them passing bills, but where does our voice count? Um, Senate Bill 540 was one of the biggest things that we fought for and it's kind of, uh, it's great to be there with Dr. Williams and Board of Trustees, trustees members were there as well. And we made a difference in that. You know, they, um, killed that bill. So, it was, it was amazing. So, you definitely got to see the fact that we do make a difference and we love to show our students that. So, we've taken, um, a lot back from those leadership conferences.
So, I'm going to go more into depth, um, on each pillar. I'm going to start here with our student success pillar. Um, as you, some of you may know already, uh, we fund the PSTA initiative, which gives, um, students free, uh, bus fare to and from campus in order to, um, increase, uh, student success. Uh, we also, um, fund and support clubs and organizations and we also make it, um, we ha, it's very important to, for us to fund our tutors that we put on our campuses. Um, we try to put them in our learning support centers, um, as well as our financial literacy. Uh, our third pillar is service. What I'd like to point out is our holiday blessings. So, here at SBC, we have, um, discovered five nearest neighborhoods that are, um, in need. So, what has been established in the downtown campus is, um, they put together a basket of, um, supplies and food and, um, they figured out which students would benefit the most from this package. And what they did is they spoke to students, they spoke to faculty and other individuals to figure out which students would benefit from it the most. Um, I'd also like to point out the Florida Dream Center, which our own Dr., um, President Dr. Williams sits in as well. Um, they worked together with the Center of Civic Engagement with Dr. Newsom. And I'd also like to point out, um, one of the projects we did together with Bless the Children. Uh, they actually brought a huge truck to the Tarpon Springs Campus. We figured out that we had a lot of medical supplies that, um, were surplus and we didn't put much use to them. So, what we did is we put them inside this truck and shipped them to Guatemala to make of better use. Um, the project was such a success that we plan on doing another one in a couple of weeks to Guyana instead. Um, and then the next slide. I don't know how to write this. Okay. Um, our fourth pillar is our diversity pillar. What we try to do in student life and student government is to, um, better connect students from different backgrounds and upbringings, whether it's a Hispanic heritage event on campus or even branching out to the community and attending the Martin Luther King Parade with other students. Um, our last pillar is our wellness pillar. Um, that is where we also fund the Bay Care Student Assistance Program Initiative and this gives students, um, better advice and more support and wherever they need it. Uh, we also actively host health fairs around every campus. Um, and if you see the picture below, there's a couple of students working out. And that's actually at our Tarpon Springs Campus where they first initiated a personal trainer to help with, um, physical and mental, mental health with students. Um, and also our last bulletin is the recreational center partnership. If you look in that booklet at the Seminole Campus, I believe it is page 16. Uh, we allocated $3,600 to partner with the rec center. Since our, um, facilities don't have our own gym services like other campuses, we wanted to provide that for our students and keep everything consistent within campuses. And, um, they're more than welcome to go over there and use their services. And this here is basically, um, experience which we've all gotten. Um, I've been in student government for two years now. Um, I've learned budgeting, governance, leadership, strategic planning and team building. Um, I'm really big on team building. I've been working with a board of eight individuals and above, um, each one of us from different degree backgrounds, getting to know each other, getting to learn different degree backgrounds, um, in our college. Um, one thing I've learned is that when, we get a lot of responsibility and we also have, um, an opportunity that most do not have. As students, we get a big say in where the money goes. We get, a lot of the time, we're faced with a yay or nay and it's simple yay or nay. Do we go for this? Do we go for that? But, within this program, I've noticed the reason why we say yay, why we say no, who we're representing, representing, what we want to bring back to, um, SBC. So, um, I definitely, I'm greatly appreciative of that. And, um, I've been able to use it today since I'm a business major, um, working on job interviews and, um, basically I want to open up my own company. So, I'm, I've been learning a lot of skills, especially speaking in front of people. And, um, budgeting, budgeting is big for me as well since I'm the treasurer. Um, but it's a great experience. I'm greatly appreciative and I'm pretty sure Follya is as well. Um, but I believe that's it and we're able to take questions whenever you guys are.
Questions from the board.
Are you guys happy with the process? Do you like the process and how it works?
Yeah, definitely. It's very, it's simple, but to the point where it's easy for us to look at it. It goes through advisor first. That way, it, it follows the certain guidelines and then it comes to us. That way, we can see it and present it with our structure and a meeting that we always have. So, it's, it's great and it goes through every year and we change it if there's any necessary things that we see your students, um, response that they don't like a certain, um, way that something is done.
Thank you for being involved.
Just got a comment. Uh, good presentation. Well done. Uh, I appreciate the pillars, but I most appreciate your fiscal responsibility. I wish, uh, other governments acted like our student governments. But I noticed that you have healthy reserves and even though we have a recurring funding stream, uh, you still feel that it's necessary, important to, uh, to have healthy reserves. So, I'm very grateful and appreciative of that.
This is a, um, process that I'm most proud of. Um, the students work very hard. They've expressed the challenge of handling a budget and telling people no and understanding what that looks like, but also understanding estimated enrollment and if the enrollment does not come, readjusting the budget as the college has, um, in time. And so, they've done a great job. You should really take some time to look at, um, their notebook. This is what they give us when they're presenting. They present twice a year. You're welcome to come to hear them. They use, um, technology that I don't know how to use yet. Um, and, uh, put the best PowerPoints together that I've ever seen. And so, I'm very proud of the work that they have done. The Student Life and Leadership coordinators, um, as well as the Associate Provost, good job.
Um, I, I have a question and this is probably going to make me sound pretty stupid, but what is, what is the actual structure and organization of student government, um, for St. Petersburg College? It, each campus has their own representatives, correct? And then, is there a president for all of them?
So, you have an advisor. There are your student, um, life and leadership advisor in each campus. Then you have your, um, executive board members, the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer and your historian. Those are your elected officials. And then you have your appointed positions, um, depending on each campus. But, those are, your executive board is the one that makes the decisions on the budget. Um, and you work with your advisors to talk about the, the money and the budgeting, what, you know, we occur. So.
Go one step higher to talk about scope. That's what I believe.
Student Council of Presidents.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the presidents of each campus, um, meet monthly and it's, um, the acronym is SCOPE. It stands for Student Council of Presidents. So, they get together, they, um, talk about what each campus has done and they work on college-wide initiatives together.
One of the big things that we did was Bay Care. We, we, we saw that some of our students didn't get that information, um, a lot of times. So, we did, um, kind of a campaign to advertise more to them, get the, the number out and tell them that there were free services. So, that was something we worked on. We had Bay Care come into our, um, meeting as well. And the presidents, um, talked about that and that we felt that that was something the students needed. We heard it and, um, we went around our campuses and did that as well.
Well, I, I think it's an outstanding process and I'll second, um, Mr. Foster. Uh, you know, it's impressive to see the thought that goes into the budget and, um, where you guys choose to allocate the resources that you have. Uh, and I really love the professionalism and the seriousness that you bring to the table with this. And I think it's a special opportunity for the students to be able to have some control there, but also to be able to work through issues, to find consensus, or if you don't find consensus, deciding to move in a certain direction and accept, um, uh, what happens or the consequences because of it. Uh, I, I mean, it's, it's fantastic. I'm glad, I'm glad this is happening and love the presentation. Thank you all very much.
Thanks so much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we will move to budget and finance with Ms. Jeanette Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, trustees, Dr. Williams. This morning I have a brief report as of our February, uh, 2018. First, we'll look at our revenue, our first line of our student tuition and our student fees. We've come in at about $52 million, which is about 85% of our budgeted amount. Next, we have our state funding where we have about $41 million. This includes our first lottery payment of $2.8 million. Woo-hoo! So, I'm very excited about that. 57% of the budget. And then our total revenue at $98 million, which is about 68% of our revenue. Again, every month you see our tuition projection. When we last looked at our, uh, tuition enrollment, we were 0.7% above what our target amount was, which equates to about $250,000. Next, looking at our expenditures for our personnel and benefits, we are at $73.4 million, which is about 65% of our budgeted amount. Our current expense at $16.1 million and our capital at $1.5 million. We're continuing the trend with our current expense and capital where we're spending less than we did in the prior year and we're also spending a little bit less than our budget amount. And then overall, our revenue over our expense, we're at about $7 million. You will see over the next few months that we'll see that variance start to decline, being that we've received 85% of our tuition and then we are still receiving the rest of our appropriation, but we'll continue to be spending, preparing for summer and fall. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay. Uh, you have in front of you, uh, the Human Resources Personnel Report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. And that moves us to, uh, the faculty and dean evaluation process with Dr. Cooper.
Yes. Good morning again, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Williams. Uh, we'll be sharing two different evaluation processes with you this morning. The first is the faculty evaluation process. And, uh, what we did, uh, several years ago, about six years ago, is we brought a team of faculty and administrators together, uh, based on recommendations in legislation that changed the continuing contract time period from three years to five years within the Florida college system and also required certain areas to be assessed in regards to faculty members' evaluation process. And one of the things that we do that not all colleges do is that irregardless of whether a faculty member is on continuing contract or not, they are, uh, evaluated on an annual basis and we have continued to do that. There were six main areas with various subcategories within them that, uh, you see before you and these were, uh, generated from the committee. All of this information and data is in an online portfolio that the faculty member keeps year to year. And it includes, includes things like various aspects associated with instructional strategies, scholarly contributions and creative productions, contributions to the college mission values, discipline and campus. Also includes specific data associated with their teaching load, the student survey of instruction data that you've just looked at earlier, and then student success, uh, rates in regards to the various courses that they're teaching. And what we ask the faculty member is to take all of that information and all of that data and reflect on what it, what is it telling them? What are some things that they might want to try changing going forward? Or is there a specific professional development that they're interested in? Uh, and then, of course, they, uh, note what professional development. And then, of course, they note what professional development they have participated in, and what is their growth plan for going forward. The whole point of this evaluation is to create continuous improvement. And they also talk about any community service or engagement that they do outside the college. Now, for each of these different categories, and you have a copy of one of the rubrics, we wanted to make sure that all faculty are assessing, first of all, doing a self-assessment, and that then the deans, who are going to review those assessments, are thinking along the same lines when we're talking about exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, progressing towards expectations, or not meeting the expectations. So you have an example of one of the rubrics, and we do a separate rubric with examples of how one would achieve the various categories, so that we're all talking about the same And so, for example, if we were to look at this particular faculty member's instructional strategies in regards to student engagement, they would document some of the things that they've done to increase student engagement, or some of the techniques they're using and incorporating other technologies, and then assess themselves in regards to how they feel what they have done relates to the specific rubric. And then, of course, the dean would review all of these to make sure they're both in When it comes to the student success data, the faculty members, and this is a hypothetical set of data for you, one of the things that we use in training the faculty members on how to use the Faculty 180 system, and how to use the data associated with student success. For example, they will receive the success information for all the courses that they've taught. They also receive information about the percentage of Ws, students who have withdrawn themselves, the percentage of WFs, those are students that the faculty member withdraws for lack of participation after the 60% point, the number of incompletes in the course, the same course taught by other faculty, and the overall success rate, the program success rate for courses, then all of those of the same course. So, for example, we have Comparative Government as the first course, all other faculty who have taught that course in the same modality comparison, and then finally, the overall SPC success rate. So this gives the faculty member a wealth of data that they can look at, various comparisons that they can make. So, for example, if we go down to the sixth course, which is American National Government, you see that the overall success rate for this particular instructor was 64. And we compare that to the other success rates, which tend to be in the mid-70s to the high 70s. That would probably raise a question. And so we would ask the faculty member to consider, what do they think, why do they think that happened? What might they want to do differently going forward to address that and improve those success rates? The deans then review all of this information. They also do an observation of the faculty member, unless the faculty member is on continuing contract and prefers to have a peer do an observation, and all of that is submitted as well. And then the dean will make various comments and sit down with the faculty member to discuss their growth plan, and how are we going to continue to make continuous improvement? So that is the Faculty Evaluation Process. And as you know from last week, we take it very seriously. It's a very thorough process, and that's why we have, this year, two faculty who were delaying decisions on until May, and one faculty member whose contract was not renewed. Any questions on the faculty process?
I do. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Good presentation. In the growth plan, I see in here, how many of those approximately do you have every year on the growth plans? And can you give me more detail about what is in a growth plan?
Well, that's the faculty members' professional development plans going forward. So it may be that they want to increase their skills, say, in online pedagogy, or more active engagement of students in the classroom. And that can come through various ways. That might be that they're going to attend more of our Center of Excellence in Teaching and Learning seminars, participate in our Teaching and Learning event that's taking place this year in April, or maybe seek some outside professional development. So it comes in various ways. So we, there would be a growth plan for all, each one of our faculty members. So I think we're currently at 370, I don't know the exact number, I can get that for you, faculty.
So every year, each faculty member has a growth plan?
Correct.
Okay. And then, community service.
Correct.
So that's, that's a part of their evaluation process?
They can document what community service they're participating in. They might be part of Rotary, they may do things at their church, they may volunteer at another organization, they may work with a food bank. It varies across the board.
So it doesn't have to be related to the college, the community service? It's just that they're involved in some.
Right. It's all part of the, one of our pillars, community engagement, as well as reaching out to the community to be more in touch.
And does the, do we, are we, do we document the evaluation process in terms of the dean or the other faculty going in and evaluating the instructors?
Doing the observations, yes. There is a form that's used for that, and that is then uploaded into the portfolio.
And is that feedback then made available to the instructor if there's something that they may have seen or not seen that could improve?
Certainly.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Thank you. Now, we'll go through the.
She has a question.
Oh, sorry.
How many people choose the dean over the peer observation?
Interestingly enough, more of them prefer the dean to do the evaluation than a peer. We kind of thought it might go the other direction, but more tend to prefer the dean.
Interesting.
All right. The dean evaluation process. About seven years ago, since the dean position is a college-wide position, and they're expected to be out on various campuses engaging with their faculty, we began using what's called a Program Administrator Appraisal, and you have a copy of that in your packet. It has five categories, and we ask all of the staff and faculty who report to the dean to give anonymous input to us on a five-point scale, going from always to never. And there are five main areas: continuous improvement, enabling others to act, supportive relationships, shared vision, and role model. And then there's also a comment section. After all of that data is in, I receive a copy of the information for each of the deans, and it will include their individual score in each of the categories, as well as the overall score for all of the deans. And so how I use this is I look at areas where maybe a dean is above the average and commend them. For those who are below the average, depending upon the particular category, we'll sit down and have a discussion. Why do you think this is happening? What are some things that you think could be done to improve that? I might make some suggestions about what could be done to improve that. And so I ask them to use that information as a piece of data to, again, form their growth plan, so that we are continuously improving their leadership skills. Then, of course, in our PLANET system is where we house their strategic goals. And based on this year's goals that you see there, I would make sure that they are addressing those within their particular department or discipline area. After reviewing their goals, if I think they need to strengthen one, or they need to add one that maybe they didn't consider, or I know they're doing things that should be incorporated or documented here, so we have that discussion. And all of those goals, they are expected to incorporate our operating principles for the academic side of the house, and you have a copy of those in your, in your packet. What I then do after reviewing the Program Administrator information, their goals that they have set, and my interactions with them, as well as their interactions with the dean team, then I would provide them with my overall sense in regards to how they're doing. I would also commend them for their strengths. And then we would address any areas where we feel there's need for improvement and work with them in creating the goals that would bring them in that direction. And that would be then the annual process that we complete. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I don't really have any questions, I guess I have. So do deans have any contact with students over the course of the year?
Yes.
So do we go back to those students and see if their interact, is that interactions with the dean is a part of the process? How they perceive their interactions with the deans? Not necessarily whether they got what they wanted, but what their interaction looked like? Do we do that at all?
Not at this time.
Who else would the dean interact with on a regular basis? Would they interact with career service folks, any of those?
Yes.
Is that a part of the process to evaluate the dean?
Not at the, not at the moment. Their administrative staff, of course.
Their personal staff.
All of their directory reports.
That they do not supervise.
Right.
Their personal staff that they do not supervise?
They do not get surveyed by their career service staff at the college who they do not supervise. So if I'm a career service staff in financial aid, I don't see the dean, so they don't supervise it. They don't get to give any input to the dean evaluation. But the evaluation, the deans work a lot with the chairs, they work with the faculty, and chairs are also considered faculty, they work with their career service staff, they partner with the provost on the provost ideas on the campuses, community members, the executive team.
So are those folks included in the evaluation process of the dean?
No. As mentioned in March, we talked about the evaluations of the entire college, if you recall. I brought forward that we are not having everyone evaluate everyone at the college. We're just getting started with the evaluation of the president and being able to provide that feedback. But we do not have individuals who are not working with other individuals evaluating them. So that, that has not happened.
I know, but I'm a little confused. If, if the dean is only evaluated by.
By the people they supervise.
By the people they supervise. I wouldn't say anything bad about the person that's my boss.
They do, because it's anonymous. It's anonymous. They do say negative things.
It may, but I would, if you hired me, I mean, and, and the fact that you saying that it's anonymous, doesn't mean it's always anonymous. I mean, listen, we live in the real world here. Leaks happen all the time, and people find out who said what, when, where, and how. I mean, it just, I'm, I'm just be honest with you, Madam President, I mean, this is no disrespect to you or Dr. Cooper or the college. To me, this process is a bunch of friends evaluating each other. And the boss, the person that's over them, is being evaluated by their underlings, and nobody else is a part of the process. I don't think you can get, I mean, even to the faculty one. I mean, the young lady stood up, and she said exactly what I thought, is that there's, there's no input from real, no real input from students. How are we ever going to get the output that we're really looking for if we're, if our processes stay the same? And, I mean, I feel like this is like a 1950s evaluation process.
I disagree, Trustee Gibbons. There are several colleges that don't have deans evaluated at all. I'm proud that the team has been evaluated, and that the faculty can provide the evaluation anonymously. They don't have to do it at their computers at the college, they can do it in the library at home. There's no name or information. Positive and information that suggests corrective interaction is included in that. You have challenged me, as president, to have the same type of evaluation of the entire college, which we will do. It will be anonymous. It too will be anonymous. I, I won't know.
I didn't challenge you to have.
Who's presenting that?
I didn't even challenge you to have an entire college evaluation. I said a 360 evaluation, which allows for different groups to evaluate you, but not the entire college.
Okay, I would kindly ask that, that you give me better direction on your expectations regarding evaluations, as well as hear me out when I'm working on the plan for evaluations going forward. I would like to bring that plan back to the board, so that you can see what we're working on, and understand what the evaluation process will be like for St. Petersburg College, if you, if you would allow that.
I'm one person. There are several people on this board. I mean, just, would you give me the data, I'll give my input. And, and, you know, the rest of these folks, man, I feel the same.
When we have the data.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to speak for everybody else, I mean, because they may not feel the same way.
Appreciate it.
And I understand the concern, the concerns that you're raising. I will say that the bulk of the information, no matter how we change this, is going to have to come, especially for the dean evaluations, it's going to have to come from the people that are underneath them, because that is who's most affected by their work. And the only way to do that is through anonymous assessments, and that may lead to some people not being 100% truthful, but I think the majority of the time.
Mr. Chair, I agree with you to a certain extent. The president said that they interact with provosts, but they're not a part of this process for the deans. They're affected every day by that, by programming that's on their campuses, but they don't have an input stake in the process for deans.
They do have input in the process for deans. They work with deans daily and talk together about what we're focusing on. They don't supervise them. The deans do not supervise, give any kind of feedback to the provost's evaluations. So if I'm understanding what your questions are, I'd like to go back and have a chance to review that entire process and bring back my vision for evaluations, if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cole?
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. And just along those lines, since you are looking at it, something we clearly ask, have lots of surveys and questions, and those, they kind of cross the line. Some are performance-based, intended to use for the purpose of evaluating, and some are strategy-based questions, trying to determine if the college is effectively meeting its goals and objectives. So I think two things that would be helpful to me is having those buckets more clearly defined, because, for example, in our last presentation, we, I think we saw both, when we looked at everything that the students are figuring, filling out and asked to respond to. But then, secondly, I think it might be something to be helpful, if on a semester basis or a biannual basis, perhaps they're on the strategy goal evaluations. I'm not, the administrative side of it, I'm not as focused on, but on the strategy and goal-based evaluations. I think it'd be interesting to see a metric or a report that shows, do our constituents think we are meeting our overall goals? And if we have stated that our strategic plan is this, and that we are looking for economic mobility and for academic excellence, so where in that strategic plan? And do our constituents think we are meeting that? So when you're looking at everything, there's probably an opportunity to collapse some of, some of these. But I, but I would, I would ask that we clearly keep those separate, because I think from an employment standpoint, there are very specific questions that we need to be asking. But then, there's also, is the college holistically meeting our goal? But then, there's also, is the college holistically meeting our goals and our strategic plans that we've set forth?
So, Trustee Cole, you're, you're right on point with where we're going with the executive leadership team, and bringing monthly reports on the three pillars, what we're focusing on, where we are in those, and having the feedback from the college. We have expanded that team to a large number of individuals to address that and to be open and transparent, and we had already had the discussion of bringing that on a monthly basis, so that we don't wait till the end of the year, and all of a sudden, we did not meet, or the college does not feel that we have addressed that issue.
Sure.
So you're right, you're right on point. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Cooper?
Yes, I do have one other question, I'll call you back. All right. To Ms. Cole's point, the reason, I want to be clear about why I'm asking these questions and why I'm focused on this. Community colleges are under attack. The quality of instruction and the output, at the end of the day, is what's going to save us, and if we don't fix this now, and we're able to go back and show how we evaluated people, hired people, got rid of people, because they don't meet the guidelines, or are not getting the job done in terms of putting out the product that we need to put out into the workforce immediately, then we're not going to survive. I'm just being honest with you. I've watched this for the last five legislative sessions, and it's probably going to get better, because Joe Negron won't be Senate President this time. But they're still looking at, they're evaluating us on what we put out, the product that we put out.
That is true.
And the only way that we can determine whether we're doing what's right or wrong is we need to have a survey process that evaluates people and evaluate them based upon, here's what you're supposed to be doing, are we getting that, and is the student or whoever getting to the place that they need to be after they're done with the program? That starts with the deans, because they run the program, and then the instructors, and then right out the door. And then you look at, just what you were saying, the outputs and other things to say, these folks that are in the business program, 85 percent of them are getting jobs at this level. Until we're able to do that, there's a problem. We got to fix that, and the only way you can fix it is by starting, holding people accountable. And the accountability starts with the, with the process of evaluating them, just like we evaluate the president, just like Katie's evaluated every year at her law firm. She's looked at several things. What did you bring in? How many hours did you bill? Did you do this? Did you get this accomplished? The process has to start. If we don't do that, we're going to be put in the same box that we have always been put in as the 13th grade. And that's what I'm hearing in Tallahassee on a constant basis. I had a sit-down with the governor at the end of the session, and, and that's what the criticism is from the Senate. Right now, the House, not so much, but from the Senate, that is the criticism. And so, if we don't start to evaluate these things differently, and get serious about the evaluation process, then there's no reason for us to even come and sit at these board meetings, if we're not going to take a critical look at the things that matter. And this is what matters. This is how we will be able to determine whether we're doing a good job. So I'm not picking on anybody. I don't want anybody to think I'm coming in here trying to pick on the president or pick on somebody else. I'm just saying, these are the things, when you look at what we're supposed to be doing, this is what matters. So I just want to be clear about that, Mr. Chair, to everybody. It's not that I want to change the process to come after one or two or three or four particular people. At the end of the day, this is what we're going to be judged on. And that's the criticism. That's why we're not getting the funding that we used to get, because they say we're the 13th grade. You put them in community college, and they can stay there for five years and still don't get an AA. That's what the criticism is. So how do we change that? Hold people accountable, and the evaluation process is the only way you can do that.
Great points. Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Any other comments for Dr. Cooper? Thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda, and I'd like to take these together, however, I do have one question, and if any other board members do as well, please feel free to ask. I'm just curious, and I, I don't know who to ask, Ms. President, but the last page, talking about the annual membership assessment of the Florida College system, that dollar amount went up, and I'm, I'm assuming it's based on an algorithm?
We're ready.
Okay. There we go.
Yes, Mr. Stonecifer. It is based on all three of those components, the workers' compensation part, the property value, and then the annual assessment is based, the annual assessment is based on FTEs. Each of those three components are funded from balances, and the consortium identified this year that the balance of that annual assessment component has been diminished to the effect that they want to replenish it appropriately. So that is the one and only part of those three that did go up.
Okay.
And it's based on FTEs and, and the replenishment of that fund balance. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Well, not 7 percent.
Yeah, that's substantial.
It is.
And this is assessed every year, as you said?
Yes, sir. We bring it to the board each, each spring.
Okay.
For the subsequent year's assessment.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So move. Okay. That brings us to our informational reports. We have none, and we will move right down to the president's report.
All right. Trustee Gibbons, earlier I thanked the board for all of their work in Tallahassee in advocating for the college, and I want to make sure you knew we appreciate you and what you've done. During spring break, you were there for five days, and we talked two or three times a day. And you had me calling everyone and their mothers during that week, and I want to thank you for that. Also, last month, I shared with you that we had our OCR visit. We had a great visit. There are about 10 or 11 different components that they look at. SPC, it was asked for us to address three of those. One of those areas is dealing with making sure that our communications are in more than just English, that we also have them translated to other languages, and we've not done that college-wide with our publications and what we need to do. The second one, on accessibilities, basically it was dealing with buildings, making sure that the elevators are operating correctly, and that the sounds that they make as they elevate from one floor to the next works, very minor things that we were very, very pleased with. And the other, there were no findings with financial aid, but make sure that we have basically gotten involved with intellectual disabilities and availed ourselves to resources that the state provide to help us support students with those disabilities. And so, Dr. Kemp has already reached out to the state to see how we can avail ourselves of those, those, those funds, so that we can provide services for students with intellectual disabilities on campus at SPC. So we'll, we'll be looking into that. I just want to applaud the college family for all its work with the OCR visit. I know you have visitors on campus, and we did very well with the audit, and I just wanted to brag to you about that. I thought that was great. A week ago, I sent you our legislative update, so you know where we are at this point. Very proud of the college on getting the 3.5 million for the Gibbs Building. I thought that that was the big signature piece and what we were focusing on for this legislative session. We are working on a monthly plan to engage our legislators in our district and beyond, so that we will be better prepared for the next session, to make sure that they have a good understanding of SPC, so they don't see us as the 13th grade, and that they understand the value that we bring to the table. And then finally, Mike Mydell shared in an article yesterday, the number of businesses moving into Pinellas County, and the economic outlook for our county, which is very bright. He indicated that there are about 20 new companies moving into the county. Late last night, I sent an email to Andrea Hennings, and she's already on it. They already have the plan, they've already engaged, so that we can be that first step with those new businesses moving into the county. And the work that we'll be doing with the Downtown Partnership on visioning for SPC's role with the Downtown Partners, and what training and collaboration we can bring to downtown is already underway. So I want to thank everyone for getting us moving in that direction, and also thank you, Board, again, for your continued support. And that is all for...
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Our next meeting is April 17th, right here at the epicenter. Thank you all for coming, and with that, we will adjourn for today.